We'll call a meeting to order at 7:08.
All councilors are present. Mr. President?
All councilors are present. We'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go to number three, Special Orders and Announcements of the Day. There are none. Public hearings, there are none. Citizens' participation. I like to ask people to step forward, give their name and address, and please keep their comments under three minutes. And please don't use any defamatory language or attack any people. Just use proper decorum. So with that, we've got a couple of people here, and then if there are others after these people speak, please step forward. The first one we have is for Andy Jorgensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I live at 10 Division Street, Milton, Wisconsin. Let me just start off by saying thank you for all that you do as a council. And boy, whatever you're doing, you must be doing all right. You've got a good crowd here tonight. And I want to thank everyone here for participating in your local government. I am State Representative Andy Jorgensen. I represent the 43rd Assembly District. It is in Rock County, most of it, and it also is in a couple of other counties, Walworth, Dane, and Jefferson Counties. The reason for me being here today is I'm switching gears and running for the Rock County Register of Deeds. I've ran an office in the state Capitol for almost a decade now. I serve as the caucus chair, so my peers elected me to keep an office for them, if you will, in a leadership post. And the job opened up not too long ago by our current Register of Deeds. He decided to step down and retire. And so we, as a Jorgensen family, we looked at it. It made more sense to us as a family. Keeps me in public service, something I definitely love and I'm pretty good at. And I just think that my record speaks for itself. I have many bills that have to do with land use and have had a particular interest in that in my time in the Assembly. Having, now, these aren't the sexiest names, but the things like extratorial plat negotiations, contiguous land annexation have been bills that I have authored and passed into law. So I have the experience with the office. This is an office, too, if you didn't know, that you'll visit a few times in your life for birth certificates. You'll also death certificate. Marriage license passes through there. Also, you'll go there for, of course, buying and selling a house. You may have to check out some plat, the plat maps, whatever it might be. It might be something that may be confusing, daunting, or frustrating. This is what I'm good at in public service, being by your side, being able to bring it down to bite-sized chunks and easy for you to understand. As far as experience goes, the fellow that's in there now, he worked in his family's flower shop and then came into the office. I've got 10 years, almost 10 years, in the state Capitol as my experience. So I hope that I can count on your vote. I have many endorsements. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your support. I also want to thank the former interim Chief of Police and state Capitol Chief of Police, Charlie Tubbs, has endorsed my candidacy along with my peers, State Representative Mark Spritezer, along with State Senator Janice Ringhand and State Representative Deb Colstie have also have endorsed my campaign. So if you'd like to learn more about me, I'd love to earn your support. You can go to andyjorgensen.com. I'm here tonight, though, to ask for your vote on August 9th. This will be dealt with and decided in the Democratic primary coming up on August 9th. So again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak here today, Mr. Chair and council members, and I'd love to have your vote on August 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason we have so many people here, Mr. Jorgensen, is because I think we have their support, and they support us, and we try to support them, and we run a good show here, I hope.
And I just want to say, and it shows. Communication is the key when it comes to local.
Community support is the key thing, and I hope we have that, because we have a wonderful community in Beloit.
You certainly do. Something to be very proud of. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Rick McGrath.
Good evening. Good evening. Rick McGrath, 1747 Sherwood, here in town. I had all my defaming comments all ready to go, and then your statement, I can't use any of them, so this will be much shorter. I want to express my appreciation for those on the city council who are working hard to try to maintain and advance housing standards here in the community. Those of us, the residents, those of us in the neighborhoods, those of us who live here, we don't have an association. We don't have a lobby. We don't have attorneys to advocate for our interests. That's why we look to you to help us protect us, the community, those of us who live here, from influences. I am frustrated by some efforts to try to remove or lower rental standards. That's a concern to me. And I would just want to add just one person's word of support. And thank you for trying to maintain standards for residents and ideally raise standards for those of us who live here, as opposed to living elsewhere and maybe owning a rental property here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. First call for anybody else who'd like to speak. Step up, sir, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I am a candidate for Rock County Treasurer on the Democratic Party in the August 9th primary. My background is primarily with Motorola Electronics. I spent 16 years as a quality process engineer over eight different facilities and moved around the country by the company, charged with opening new facilities four times, streamlining operations for them. I have a certified green belt in statistical quality control and improvement. I have written over 100 document, operation documents for the company and managed offices of and organizations of five to 40 people. My strength is in taking operations, finding where there are room for improvement, and improving them for efficiency and also to eliminate opportunity for error. I apologize. I am at 970 Bedford in Janesville, and I would like to speak with each of you individually, as time allows, and address any questions you may have. Look forward to getting your vote on August 9th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dor. Your secretary, or what? Well, you know the procedure. Introduce yourself, Phil, please.
836 Church Street. Now, these are flash drives. Don't put them in your city computers. But it's, this is about the batting cage.
For those who didn't hear, this is Bill Dor. I don't think you said it in the speaker. Go ahead, Bill.
And I'm not running for office. But anyways, I, for the last 56 Saturdays out at the Snapper Park, we built a batting cage. The building's 100 feet by 33 by 14 feet in the air. We're at the end of it now. There's just a few more fundraising things. So Knights of Columbus decided they'd do the pancake breakfast this Saturday between 7:00 and 11:00. You're welcome to come. Hit a couple of balls in there if you'd like, see what it's all about. Turned out pretty nice. I mean, and the Major League Baseball is, and they've been batting in there. The second page of that just kind of tells you some of the statistics. There's been like 22 volunteers, and it's been an interesting project. But my wife says I have to go home now and start working, so I'm about done here on that. But pleased if anyone wants to join us. And the flash drive is just kind of showing from start to finish, and it's a little more complicated than what you might think. They were, in the beginning, looking to build like a, they were talking about a pole barn or something, and that's when I stepped in and said, no, it's in a neighborhood. We're going to make it look nice. Me and Joe Stottleman, over some napkins at Starbucks, designed it, and then he did all the final drawings. But it turned out really cool. And so you'll see it from the flash drives and go from there. Second thing was, was I want to compliment on the garbage bins. I just love them. I don't, I love seeing those guys not having to lift that anymore and hurting themselves. And I know that there's probably everyone's fielding complaints, and I'm offering my services. I'll be glad, because the rest of the world has went on to this type of garbage pickup. And I believe we can do it in Beloit. And I'm just as happy as can be, so feel free to send complaints my way.
Yeah, just want to thank you for your contribution to the Parks Department and making Beloit better with your work and stuff. Mark, just a second here.
Oh, congratulations on completing the batting cages. I watched that start about three years ago or so when the proposals were floated around and what to do to get them a modern batting facility out there. You guys really came through and saved us a ton of money and made a really nice place out there. I'm looking forward to seeing it Saturday. I'll try to get myself out there and save some coffee for me, okay?
Oh, yeah. No, it's going to be fun. It's kind of an open house. You can go through the clubhouse, so you can see.
On the Parks Commission, we looked at that and looked at that, and it was like, wow, we've, you know, we've got to do something. You guys really, yeah, helped make it happen, so I really appreciate that. Thanks, Bill.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor DeForest.
Yes, thank you. I've really enjoyed watching it progress. Thank you so much to you and your volunteers. I'm really hoping that you will submit the names of the volunteers so we can recognize them at a future city council meeting, because they put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into.
Yeah, they did. There's, you know, 1,200 man-hours, I think, it's on there. But, you know, they were fed and they were given beer, and that was the only reason they were there.
I was out there one day. It was really hot, and they were just working away, so I want to make sure we recognize them.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
No more lights. I'm out of here.
Hi, Larry.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Yuri Rashkin, and I'm writing for Rock County Treasurer. My address is 1804 Oakwood Avenue in Beloit. And I'd like to point out that I am the only resident of Beloit running for Rock County Treasurer, which I think is important. I also am excited because, as you were speaking about the Beloit Snappers, I led the launch of Janesville Community Radio a couple of years ago, and now Beloit Snapper Games are heard on Janesville Community Radio, which I'm very proud of. So a little bit about me. I served four years on Janesville City Council, and for prior 10 years, I owned and operated a mortgage company where I helped people buy and refinance homes. So I've been dealing with credit reports, assessors, appraisers, lenders, all of those things for about a decade. Then, in 2008, when the economy went kaboo, I went back to school, got a master's degree at UW-Whitewater, where I currently teach full-time in the Communications Department. I believe that my experiences give me the empathy to understand challenges that other people are going through. And as the next Rock County Treasurer, I will make sure that everyone is treated fairly when dealing with the office. Very much appreciate Councilmember Sheila DeForest's support in the race. It's always good, but I just, in general, appreciate seeing a lot of familiar faces in this room and as well as the days. Thank you so much. I would very much appreciate and hope to earn your vote on August 9th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yuri. Other people who'd like to step forward? Persons. First call. Second call. Third and final call to address the council. Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting. We'll go on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Would items, would councilors like items removed? Sheila?
Thank you. I'd like to request that items C and K be removed, please.
B as in.
C. C as in cat.
C as, okay. And G?
And K.
K.
K as in kite.
We will have.
I was really struggling with the K word there. I got one.
Okay. So we will have up for approval A, B, C, D, E, F, I'm sorry, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and L. Is that correct? Okay. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Second.
Motions are made in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item G.
C. C is a resolution approving the change of agent on a Class B beer and a reserve Class B liquor license for Fiesta Cancun, authentic Mexican restaurant in Beloit, Wisconsin, doing business as Fiesta Cancun. They're located at 2648 Prairie Avenue. They would be changing from Jose Cortez to DeVincent Lazaro for the license period July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. The Alcohol Beverage License Committee did recommend approval of this change of agent on a vote of seven to zero. This change of agent application has come before you once before and was denied because the application was not satisfactory, and Captain Rissy could not recommend the candidate at that time. This time around, he did review the application. On the application, he did notice that the applicant answered no to question two, which reads as follows. Have you ever been convicted of any offenses other than traffic unrelated to alcohol beverages for violation of any federal laws, any Wisconsin laws, any laws of any other states or ordinances of any county or municipality? He did answer no to that. There is a schedule for successor of agent question that simply asks, have you ever been convicted of a federal law violation? Have you been convicted of a state law violation? In which he answered yes. Question six on that one is, have you ever been convicted of a local ordinance violation? In which he answered yes. Behind those yeses, he did list that he did have a DUI in 2009 and disorderly conduct back in 2002. So you're looking at a 14-year and a six-year, seven-year violation here. When asked about why he answered no to question two, he said that he thought that that was related to other traffic-related offenses. He was asked to amend his application, and so he stayed after the alcohol committee and amended that with me. So I do have an amended form where he did answer yes on both forms now, so it is consistent. And, you know, like I said, he's done everything that he's been asked to do, and the committee is recommending seven-zero.
Alcohol Commission recommended seven-zero. Okay. Counselor questions? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that. I do have concerns about this agent. First of all, when the original person was submitted to be appointed as agent, they had multiple violations that they did not disclose on their form until it was found in the background check, and our Beloit Police Department representative pointed that out. And then we have now a subsequent issue where a person, from my perspective, is not disclosed until it was brought to their attention and then disclosed it later. I'm uncomfortable with trusting someone with the privilege of an alcohol license who does not seem to have good judgment, who does not seem to be quite forthcoming in some of the issues here, and so I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Other councilors? Counselor Levy.
What was the, did the police weigh in? I mean, I heard what the police officer did. Did they lean one way or another? I mean, I missed that.
Captain Rissy questioned me on why question two was answered no on the one form, but the other violations were answered yes on the other form. When I reached out to DeVincent, he said, well, isn't question two just on traffic violations? I read him the question again. He said, I apologize, and he answered, you know, he said, as you can see, I answered on the other form and listed those accurately. I might say that this particular person did not originally say no to all of it. He had two different forms with two different answers, because he thought the first one was traffic-related only. So Captain Rissy did ask me. I reached out to him. I explained it. Captain Rissy then spoke to him at the Alcohol Beverage Committee meeting. He explained himself. Captain Rissy said he had no objection to the appointment, and then the committee voted.
Because I'm kind of confused, and then kind of thinking along the lines of Counselor DeForest, sitting down here previously in several years, it just seems as though sometimes, and this may not be the case, that individuals are coming forward, and we want to get this license so bad. To me, if I want to get a license so bad, I am going to take the time to make sure that I answer every question completely with an understanding. And if I don't understand something, I am going to get someone to assist me with this, because when you come down here and you answer the questions one way, and then after the meeting, you're pulled off the side, you ask a question, you're answered a different way, then to me, it seems like you're trying to pull something over. And that may not be the case.
Can I ask, call in the attorney, Krueger, for a comment?
I just wanted to clarify that Madam Clerk did clarify that he did answer the question that he had the DUI on the one questionnaire. He just said no on the first one. So it's not like he didn't disclose it. He just disclosed it on the wrong form. I just wanted to make that clear, because Mr. Forrest indicated that he, at least I took the impression that you thought he had withheld that information until questioned. He did provide it. He had just conflicting documents.
Andy, I'm still, I'm still struggling with the fact that, I mean, I think if this is something that is so important to individuals, then you need to get a, in my opinion, it's just me thinking that you need to get some kind of understanding if you're not, I don't know. I don't know, because we had it before, and I was back here again with issues.
And this is not the liquor license for the establishment. This is the change of agent, just to make sure that everybody is aware.
Counselor Duncan.
And the DUI that he reported, that was in 2009.
Correct.
So there's some time in between there.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask for clarification. From when I spoke with you earlier, it seemed to me that he had written in the comment about the DUI conviction later, after he submitted his application.
After the alcohol committee talked to him in front of Captain Rissy and voted, he was asked to stay after the meeting and amend the first form where he answered no and list that so that the forms matched, so that we had an accurate application on file. So on the one form, he didn't need to do anything, but on the form that he answered no, he stayed and he initialed the yes and then wrote the same thing that he had on the other form.
Counselor Preschel.
Would it be appropriate to ask if he's here in the forum that he can answer questions?
I looked for him, but I did not see him here.
I know he's, I noticed he's not a resident, and I'm not quite sure of the role of agent exactly, but, you know, that might be something to consider, too.
You have to be a Wisconsin resident.
We had the, we had the issue last time with the previous one where the person didn't understand the application, so it would be nice to clarify that.
Counselor Levy.
I'm really, I'm really confused now, and that we have questions on your application at the committee level. You stay after, you answer the questions, you get it approved, and then you still don't show up, to me. That I, I don't know. I, to me, it just seems like we're playing a game, and I don't play games.
He was informed to be present tonight at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, I realize that, yeah.
I can't speak for him.
I don't. I know.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would just like to implore my colleagues to consider the gravity of the responsibility that comes with being an agent. And so I do, I am concerned about the level of responsibility that is not demonstrated here. I mean, this, again, I want to remind everyone that alcohol licensing and granting agents for oversight of an alcohol license, that's a serious concern, and it's a privilege. It's not a guaranteed right. So if someone doesn't step up and show some responsibility for administering it correctly, I don't think this body should grant that. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Beth, did you want to speak? Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that he somehow didn't provide the information.
I just want to add, I'm concerned, because the Alcohol Commission voted 7-0, and I have total respect for the Commission, and I, they pored over this, and they got into it. But other councilors have made some valid points. Laurie, what if we don't approve this, would another agent apply, or what usually happens in that case?
Attorney Krueger would like to respond.
If you don't approve this agency after this meeting, the restaurant will no longer have a liquor license. They will not be able to sell until they appoint an agent.
So they could come back at a future meeting, or?
They could, but as of the end of this meeting, they will no longer be able to sell.
Thank you.
Actually, Jose Cortez is the licensed agent to June 30th, but it would.
No, this is, this was a change of agent, so if their change of agent is not approved under the law at the time that the governing body meets, the license is no longer effective if that agent is not approved.
Attorney Krueger, is it appropriate for me to ask at this time if there have been violations at this establishment, or was that taken in a direction we shouldn't go in or could be inappropriate?
I'm not aware of any for this restaurant that has risen to the levels at the committee. I don't know of any calls for service, but there has been no action in front of the committee related to this license holder.
Okay, with that. Counselor Levy.
Just so, point of clarification. So at the end of this meeting, if we deny this, then at the end of the meeting, the police would go and tell them they couldn't be able to sell?
We would have to make contact with the restaurant, indicate that they are no longer allowed to sell alcohol. And we would follow up with the letter as well, but the license to sell alcohol is no longer valid if the agent is not approved at this meeting.
Madam Attorney, did you realize that the agenda item shows that it's a change of agent for the license period July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017? And that currently Jose Cortez is the agent through June 30? I'm not sure that that makes a difference, but.
Counselor DeForest. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, I guess I'd like to look at some, do they have their application with you?
Yep.
You can move on while I take a look at this.
Counselor De.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If it was this important to this business, I would hope that they would appoint an agent who was responsible enough to be here at this meeting and to answer the application appropriately. You know, I understand the concern for the business, but they have to do their part, too. If need be, I would be willing to attend a special meeting if that's the case. If they choose to submit another agent, I'm willing to do that. But just to grant someone this, to try to help out the business, you know, our responsibility as a council is to consider the impact on the community. And if we don't have a responsible agent, that could impact the community negatively. So I don't want us to make a decision based on business convenience only.
Attorney Krueger, I have another question. Because this person has applied to be the agent, and the one who is currently the agent did not reapply, they would lose it, because there would be no agent.
After reviewing the documents, my opinion still stands if the committee, or the board, excuse me, council does not approve the change of agent, they would lose their license until they would have a successor agent that would be approved by this council.
So they could have had two agents, and they're both applied, but only one applied. Is that correct?
Correct.
And because only one applied, and if that.
You can only appoint one agent at a time. You can't appoint multiple agents.
Okay, that answers the question. Thank you. Counselor Duncan.
The thing that I'm struggling with, Dave, is that we have the alcohol and the license committee, and they went 7-0. And so for me, that is, I have been to one meeting so far, missed the last one because I had a death. I had a death in my family, but I know they take it seriously. I know that the people usually come forward that are requesting a license. So I do struggle with that because that's what they do. They go through each individual case, so I struggle with this particular issue.
And if I can respond to that, I think when we do approve these licenses, I don't think we always have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't always have the agents in the audience. They don't always come. Isn't that correct? I mean...
Well, they're directed to appear before you at the Alcohol Commission meeting. I don't know why he's not here today.
At the Alcohol Commission meeting.
No, they're directed to appear before the City Council tonight, so I don't know why he's not here tonight.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Ms. Duncan? Okay. Counselor Preschel.
I'm just going to point out that there are a number of agents that were on the other items that we approved on the consent agenda. They are here to, and so I don't think it's too much of a burden to ask them to be here. I'll just point that out.
Counselor Levy.
One last point, and I'm done. I also said on the Alcohol Commission, and this will not be the first time that we did not support their decision. And to, Mr. President, to your point, yes, there are times that other agents were not sitting in the audience, and we move forward with that. However, my point is that if there's so much questioning at the committee level, not only once, but twice, and you still fail to show up because of there, I can guarantee you, if there's questions at the committee level, and we're getting the minutes from those committees, and we see that there's questions at the committee level, you better believe there's going to be questions here, common sense would say, I got a lot of questions at the committee meeting, I think I should be at the council meeting. It's my two cents.
Can we call for the vote?
There's no motion.
I just want to make a final comment. I just, too, I was on the Alcohol Commission years ago, and I feel like Counselor Duncan, the respect for a 7-0 vote, there could be a number of reasons that this individual's not here. I take it very seriously when we maybe close a business down. And counselors have made some very good points tonight, but I still am going to vote in affirmative on this because I would like, I wish we could send a letter out expressing our concerns, but I can't see shutting based on the evidence I have and based on the 7-0 Alcohol Commission, it's not enough for me.
I don't think it's precedent.
Counselor Preschel.
I was just going to reiterate what you said.
Sorry, go ahead.
President Lubke, I just want to reaffirm, you're not going to be shutting down the business per se. You're just going to be stopping the sale of alcohol until they can appoint a new agent. So just to be clear, they can't operate their restaurant just without the sale of alcohol.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Preschel, did you...
I was just going to reiterate what you were saying. I'm loath to go against the Alcohol Review Committee only because there's, they had a 7-0 vote, they had opportunity to interview the person and proceed, and I'm leery of this business because they've already appointed one agent who really didn't understand his role of agent and was, you know, it was a mess. And I just wonder if they're sneaking one by, that's all. And that gives me that pause. And without him here, I can't verify that or not, but I guess I'm going to lean with you and say this, I'm hoping our Alcohol Committee did their job and vetted this person properly.
We don't want to go on, just call the question, please.
Is there a motion? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. The final responsibility lies with us. I appreciate that the committees that we have in place do the work for us, vet for us, provide recommendations, but the responsibility ultimately lies with us, and we are granting this agent based on our good conscience that we think this will be a responsible agent, regardless of recommendations that were made. So the buck stops here, and I want to make sure that's very clear, that that's why we're here, to make sure that the recommendation makes sense for our city. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? To get it on the table. I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Motion seconded by Hendricks. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we'll need to do a count.
DeForest?
Nay.
Duncan?
Aye.
Is that aye? Levy?
Nay.
Lubke?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Nay.
Preschel?
Aye.
And Slonaker.
Motion fails four to three. Okay, what other one did we pull on that? Was that K?
K is a resolution approving the 2015 wastewater utility Wisconsin DNR compliance maintenance annual report.
Good evening.
Samantha.
Good evening. You do have before you tonight a resolution to approve the Wisconsin DNR compliance maintenance annual report, which is essentially a report card for the wastewater utility. They look at the financial aspect, the operational aspect, pretreatment aspect, and various requirements, and we're graded on that on a scale of A to F. This year, we received straight As as we have in years past. So I'm here before you tonight to answer any questions and recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you for being here. Questions from counselors. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Thank you, Harry, for answering our questions, and congratulations on the A grades across the board. It's wonderful.
I'll pass that along to staff.
Yes, please, your staff. The two questions I had, on which I'd sent to you, one was, I asked if there's anything that we can do proactively to address the permit violations that do exist. I know we do a really good job of having that fantastic awards luncheon where we recognize permit users that are being compliant. Is there anything else that we can do to address the permit violations?
Well, yeah, and I think the most important thing we could do, and I stressed over the last year and a half, both commercially and with our industrial partners, is compliance over enforcement. And it's just a little better way of finding the path to overall compliance, because nobody wants to enforce. Personally, I don't like enforcement. We're required by the EPA, as the agent for the EPA and DNR, it's our job to enforce pretreatment standards. However, there are better ways to get there, maybe, and that's through compliance, working with them, and working with them hand in hand if they have an issue. And our staff is very well-versed in the art of wastewater treatment, and they can offer a lot of ideas that can help. So we're working, we're focusing on compliance as opposed to enforcement, but there's a fine line, though. We have to be careful not to get too far over the compliance, and that's something I fall into. And I sometimes get, I get pulled back by staff saying we still need to look at the enforcement side, too, pretty tightly, too. So it's a balancing act, and I think we balance it very well, and we get wonderful cooperation from our partners. And I think that's a testament to the lack, or I would say, lack of, but the lack of violations that we have. Our industrial partners do a wonderful job, and they understand it. And I think that's due to our staff's hard work in explaining and assuring, and through training. We've had training events for our partners this year.
Okay, good.
And we had, in fact, we had a few all-day classes. We brought them in, and we should walk through permits with them. This is why it's important that we're, you know, what you're doing and what we're doing.
That's perfect.
So that's one of the methods that we're using.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask about the education and training, so I'm glad to hear that. And then are we troubleshooting with violators about how they can address it specifically?
We do the best we can.
Okay.
Again, the balance between enforcement and compliance.
Right. And then the other question I had, I'm a little concerned about our sewer line televising. I saw, I think the statistics said that we're only televising 3% of our system per year, which is concerning. I know we did, in our CIP, we did get some new equipment. Is that going to help? It's improved this?
It should help. You know, since 2007, we've averaged 5% each year, okay? The benchmark, there was a study down in the American Society of Civil Engineers that shows 6.8% is pretty much an industry standard. The DNR has recently requested that we do 10%. And I talked to Cliff Stenilson, our Collection System Supervisor. That's our goal for 2016 and beyond is at least 10%. However, as we all know, staffing, equipment issues, priorities, you know, we're shooting for 10%, but if we don't reach there, we'll strive to get there in another year. But again, there's factors at work against you. We're going to do the best we can to assure that we reach that 10% benchmark. That's our goal.
Is the primary limitation the resource of staff or equipment?
It's a combination. And again, priorities, it's, some of the is based on our road reconstruction. Some years, we may have done a little more road reconstruction, so when we do that, you know, yeah. So, you know, the last few years, we've had changes in staff, so there's been certain training, we're trying to bring them up to speed on the equipment. So, you know, the fact that there's been sort of a decline in that, I'm not surprised by it. We did lose Steve Woodman a few years ago, and he was instrumental in a lot of the work that's going on in the collection system. So there's always going to be sort of a new beginning when you lose somebody as critical as Steve. So, and we're trying to build back, you know, back up from where we were when he was with us.
Okay.
And we're going to continue to work towards that, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. I'm just so concerned about it because the televising helps point out leaking, which then reduces the groundwater pollution. So to me, that's pretty critical, and, yeah, so I appreciate efforts to really work harder at that.
And if you look at the influent flow compared to previous year's work, we, 4 million gallons per day is where I want to be, and we're right there, so we're doing really well.
Right.
So, yes.
Great, thank you.
Steve's work is still in play.
Legacy lives on.
We're going to do the best we can to carry on that legacy. Definitely.
Great, thank you, Harry.
You're welcome.
Very fair. We have a motion. I just want to, I've read some, several places, that Beloit has some of the cleanest drinking water in the nation.
We do.
And especially with what we've seen in Michigan and other places, it's, we appreciate that. Is that Beloit water?
Yeah, I got rid of that Indiana stuff.
Okay, good.
This is Beloit water.
So thank you for all you do, you do a very good job at...
We're blessed with these sandstone aquifers. We certainly are.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion 7-0. Going on to ordinances, second reading.
7A is a proposed ordinance to amend Section 7.06 Sub 2, Sub C 1, 7.065, 14.02 Sub 9, 14.06, Sub 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 2504, Sub 4D of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to rental unit inspection program and rental registration certificates. This is second reading.
2015 Wisconsin Act 176 was enacted in March of this year. It included various provisions which affect our current rental dwelling permit program. So several changes are being proposed to our municipal code to address that law. The first is that the proposed ordinance renames the title of the document from an annual rental dwelling permit to an annual rental registration certificate. This is throughout the ordinance. Section 2 provides a clear explanation of the fees being charged for the rental inspection program. Section 4 provides a rationale for the program. Section 5 removes the provision which allowed the cities to suspend the rental registration certificate for failure to allow a rental inspection. Section 6 specifies the late fee amount, which will be established by City Council resolution. And Section 12 specifies how we will transition from the rental dwelling permit to the rental registration certificate. And you held your first reading at your last meeting, and this is on your agenda for action tonight.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Hendricks, seconded by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Is that six to one, am I correct?
I would abstain.
I'm sorry, we have five approve, one nay, one abstain, one abstention. Five, one, one. Going on to B.
7B is a proposed ordinance to create Section 14.03 Sub 3G and 12 Sub BG, and to amend Section 25.04 Sub 4 Sub C of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to possession and use of illegal fireworks. This is first reading with a request to suspend the rules for second reading.
Captain Mullin.
Good evening, council members. The ordinance changes requested to address local ordinance gap in the current language to the ordinance that precludes the department's ability to locally enforce the possession of illegal fireworks. The current ordinance limits enforcement to the use of illegal fireworks as opposed to the statutory prohibition of possession of use. This can create difficulty in enforcement and requires all charges of possession to go to the circuit court. The proposed changes adopt the state statute language relative to fireworks possession. The proposed ordinance will provide both the police and fire department with greater enforcement capability in addressing fireworks violations. As this ordinance has not been reviewed in several years, we plan on reviewing the ordinance in its entirety. Some of the key issues that we've been dealing with is that fireworks violations are a police and fire concern around the Fourth of July, and the illegal use of fireworks is a huge public safety concern in terms of injury in the public and errant fireworks, as well as a fire danger to dwellings and occupants. Beloit has a reoccurring issue with the illegal fireworks, and this ordinance amendment will provide the ability for police and fire to locally enforce these issues.
So would it be easier to give a citation, it will be municipal now instead of circuit?
Yes. Currently, municipal side only allows us to cite for the use of those fireworks, and many times, officers are unable to actually observe the use of the fireworks, but we know that they're using them, and when we make contact, we see that they're still in possession of a large quantity of fireworks. This allows officers the ability to enforce that now with the possession, which is in the same guidelines as its statutory requirements.
Thank you, Captain. Is there a motion? Just a second, just a second. We have questions. Go ahead, Counselor Preschel.
Oh, I was waiting for a motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Okay. Talked all night, okay. Manager Luther, go ahead.
Just very quickly, I think Captain Mullin hit on this, but we are respectfully requesting that you waive the first reading and have both first and second reading this evening so that we are able to have this enacted prior to Fourth of July weekend, so that we can use enforcement action. Upon approval, if that is the will of the council, we will be moving forward with an active public information campaign so that individuals throughout the city understand that we will now be enforcing this possession ordinance, and that we are not only advising that they not be putting off illegal fireworks in the city or using them, but possession will be enforced actively.
Thank you for that clarification. So first, we'll need a motion to suspend the rules.
I will move.
Moved by Preschel, seconded by Slonaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, rules are suspended. This will be a second reading. Now, is there a motion to approve?
But I also have a question.
Counselor Preschel, did you, you didn't have, okay. Counselor DeForest, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Mullin. I just wanted to make sure, so the intention is that if there's a caller complaint of someone shooting off an illegal firework, and the police officer gets there, if they don't actually see them in the use, but they see they're in possession of it, that we can ticket them. Is it safe to assume that we're not going to be going on a hunch, looking in people's houses and cars for possession of fireworks that they might transport to another state to use legally? Is that correct?
Yes. Our goal is always to make sure that the community is safe, and we do that by proactive enforcement when we see people causing a danger in the community. So that's the primary focus.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted that clarification.
Counselor Duncan.
And I have a question. I know that you talked about this at our listening session at Merrill Community Center, but my question is that, and I asked this before, is that you will make it, I hope that you'll make it available where the public can be aware of what's legal and what's illegal.
Yes, as part of, yes, as part of the community outreach that we're going to be doing, we're going to utilize our Twitter, our Facebook accounts to provide the information. We'll be partnering with the fire department. As you know, the fire department has a nice display to educate the public, so we're going to be utilizing all those avenues to be able to get the information out quickly before the Fourth of July.
Last item, Mr. President. Thank you. I certainly know this will be my, only my second Fourth of July here in Beloit, but we were absolutely bombarded by complaint calls and concerned citizens. So our intention is absolutely to be able to respond in a manner that allows us to to get a better handle on the illegal use and possession of fireworks in the City of Beloit. So that is the intention, and it is a response to the numerous phone calls and complaints that we receive.
Counselor Preschel.
And that was kind of where, where I was going to go with that. Mike? That's kind of where I was going to go with that, too. This will add a significant change to the way we handle those calls this year versus in the past. Well, don't you think on that? I mean, in the past, we've gotten a lot of calls, and we made a lot of drive-bys and checks-outs and stuff like that, but nothing seems to ever come of it. And now you're going to see some consequences to that.
Yes.
That's one of the big changes that, and that will be part of your, your, your public information campaign coming forward as we approach the holidays and stuff?
Yes, and hopefully with the communication, especially the amount of Facebook followers, followers we have, and on Twitter and stuff, getting this information out quickly, hopefully will dimensions calls them, we should see, hopefully, very little enforcement because we'll get compliance.
So you'll, you'll get the word out that things are going to be different this year?
Yes.
Okay, that's important. Thank you.
And we've been, and we started to get some of that information out at our listening sessions.
Okay.
We have a motion for approval.
Mr. President, we have a first, we need a second on that motion.
Okay. We have a second.
Thank you. Counselor Levy did.
We have, okay, a motion by Levy, second by Slaniker. Is that correct?
DeForest, second by Levy.
Okay. Sorry, man. Motion by DeForest, second by Levy. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Captain. Appointments, appointments were made by the Appointment Review Committee, to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, Dennis Baskin, the Beloit School District representative, to the Equal Opportunities Commission, Stephen Holland, and please forgive me if I do not pronounce this name correctly, Jennifer Perot, Perot, and incumbent Mary Weaver, to the Municipal Library Board, Shelley Cronin, Martin, Martin Dench, Angela P. Moore, and Samantha Johnson, and to the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Shelley Cronin, as the school district representative. We have the following vacancies: the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, one vacancy for a Tavern League representative, the Appointment Review Committee, the Board of Review, the Equal Opportunities Commission, and the Municipal Golf Course Committee, one vacancy for a youth representative. Counselor DeForest, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know if you're done, but I wanted to make sure we didn't vote on it real quick before I ask the question. I don't know if Attorney Krieger could maybe ask, answer this. Do we have a city ordinance that says that someone can't serve on more than one committee?
Go ahead. Sorry, man.
The ordinance prohibits city, citizen members from serving on more than one committee. This person is a representative from the school board, so it's a position that's held by their position on the school board versus being a citizen member. So there isn't a prohibition that a school board representative
Okay.
Not serve on more than one committee.
Just a citizen member. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. I'll leave your mic on. We're going to go to Counselor Comments.
And we don't have a motion yet.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Levy, second by DeForest. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass seven zero. Okay, we'll go to Counselor Activities, Upcoming Events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. First, I'd like to make sure that the public is aware that there will be some exciting academies, police academies for our young people. That is a collaboration with the State Line Boys and Girls Club and our Beloit Police Department and Blackhawk Tech. And the academies will be held June 22nd and July 27th. And the intent of it is to help get some local youngsters interested in a career in law enforcement. So very excited about that. If you have a youngster who you think might be interested, please contact the Boys and Girls Club about getting signed up for one of those academies. I would like to share also that the trans program, the construction training program through Community Action is looking to start another round of training. And so please contact Community Action if you're interested in that. Happy to report that there's been incredible fantastic results of the grads in that program, getting very high-paying jobs in the transportation construction fields. So please consider applying for that free training at Community Action. In terms of the activities that I have attended, I was able to attend the Parks and Rec Meeting, the Big Hill Park Bike Path dedication. Would like to again thank the Rock Trail Coalition, and in particular, our very own Beloit-er Rick Barter for his championing to see this through to fruition. Participated in the walking through the Near West Side as we strategize how to help support the community there. Attended the Library Board Meeting and the Beloit Police Department Listening Session at Merrill Community Center. Finally, I would like to express my condolences to three families in particular that have been faced with the hardship of losing loved ones. First is Sue Jurcelt, who works with Rock Road and actually has been a champion of DBE efforts. And so I want to extend my condolences to her family. Would like to also extend my sympathies to the families of Latrice Sandlin and Amy Harper, who also lost their lives this past weekend. And just want to let you know that we are thinking of you. Thank you.
Counselor Slaniker.
I had the opportunity to walk through the West Side neighborhood as well and the Bluff Historical District to see some products that the city will be encountering soon. Opportunity to go to the Library Board Meeting, a lot of exciting things going on at the library this summer, movie sessions for kids, for adults, lots of different events, and the Big Hill Bike Path Ceremony as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan.
I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony along with our city manager and my colleagues at Big Hill Trail on Thursday, June 9th, that was hosted by the City of Beloit and the Rock County Trail Coalition. I would like to give a special thanks to Brian Ramsey, our Parks and Leisure staff, and the Coalition for their work in ensuring that we have a new paved bike trail, which will make Beloit even more unique. It was good to see Rick Barter leading the charge and full gear on his bike, and there were others that joined in, too. Also, I was at Merrill Community Center for the Listening Session on Friday that was provided by the Beloit Police Department, and am looking forward to future meetings where more members of the public will have a chance to offer input. With gun violence on the rise, it is great that our law enforcement here in Beloit are trying to reach out to the public and will be going door to door to gain trust among citizens. Then I went to the farmer's market on Saturday and was impressed by all the different vendors and had a chance to go in some of the downtown stores. I encourage others in our community to go downtown and walk through our businesses, our restaurants, and farmer's market. I took my grandson with me and had a hard time leaving. Also, I was with the Merrill Community Center softball co-ed, co-ed league on Saturday. The group held another fundamental camp and practiced at the girls' softball field at Beloit High School. More importantly, I was happy to see so many consistent volunteers there. Scotty Davidson, Brian Elliott, Jerry Kenny, Tim Listenby, Terry Hopper, Tom Evans, Mike Hutchinson, Richard Bevene, Swahili Allen, Bobby Weaver, Martha Cotter, Alan Honor, and Pat Majee, that's just to name a few. These are very caring individuals who are working together to promote a positive image for Beloit by mentoring our young people. Lastly, I would like to send my condolences to the families of Amy Harper and Latrice Sandlin. Both of these women will truly be missed in Beloit. Amy had a great sense of humor and had just received her bachelor's degree. Latrice was consulting with the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation rehabilitation to help people who are seeking permanent employee, employment. Jerry Kenny's nephew passed away, too. So let's keep their family in our prayers. Thank you.
Counselor Preschel.
Well, let's see. We, we took a tour last Monday of the Near West Side area, the blocks around Bluff, Euclid, Highland, and reviewed some of the properties that are being slated for remodeling or possible demo or, you know. Anyway, that was very interesting. We got to see some insides of some houses and what they looked like after five years of nonhabitation. It's pretty dramatic and pretty shocking. It's amazing how fast that paint will come off the walls when there's no attention. Anyway, after that Friday evening, we had the first music at Harry's, and it was a huge success, great weather, perfect weather. And Harlan Jefferson put on a great show. I'd also like to mention my sympathies to Latrice Sandlin's family because she was one of the people that helped me when the Beloit Corp ended. She was one of the first people I talked to about where to go after I'm done with Beloit Corp. And my wife works with her sister. And it was quite a shock. So my sympathies with them. And I'm looking forward to seeing some people riding that trail out of Big Hill Park. If you haven't had a chance, go check it out. It's really, really neat. Go, go see it while it's, while it's still nice and clean. The grass is already growing along the sides. You can hardly tell it was ever, you know, it was, it was new, but it's really, really sharp. Go out and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Levy.
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And Counselor Hendricks.
I don't want to reiterate what everyone else has said. So hard being last or close to being last.
You gotta change that name.
I know. I'll pass. But I did, I was involved in many of the things that others shared.
I, I too was fortunate enough to spend time with my other counselors and attend most of these events. The only one I think that wasn't mentioned was the, we were invited as a council to, I think it was nine, 10, Park Avenue, I think nine, 20, Park Avenue. I think it was my wish a few years ago that that be torn down. It was, it was a mess, to say the least. I think people had to be evicted by the police. Boilers were out. It was just, it was really a mess. I walked through Saturday, and I think they spent well, well, they spent in excess of $2 million, and it was pretty impressive. I just told the owners I hope they can keep it up and I hope they maintain what they have there. They filled the pool in. It's now a patio. And my only concern was the parking. There's indoor parking downstairs, which is very nice, but there'll be a few people on the street. But any other than that, it's a vast improvement to what was there, in my opinion. Money well spent. I went through several of the units, and, and they're doing a good job of screening tenants. So hopefully it will add to Beloit and enhance Beloit. Okay, going on to city managers' presentation. We have none. Reports from the boards and officers. A.
Eleven A is a resolution authorizing the schedule of fees and charges for residential rental unit inspections and annual rental registration certificates.
Christiansen.
The ordinance that was passed earlier says that the fees will be established by city council resolution. So the annual rental registration certificate fee and late fees are identical to what is currently being charged for the annual rental permit. The rental inspection fees were first introduced in the 2014 budget, and the fees on the attached schedule are similar to those fees. If the fees are not approved as indicated on the resolution, there could be a negative impact on the city's budget because they do, the budget was approved, assuming those fees were in place.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Moved for approval by Levy, second.
Second.
Seconded by Hendricks. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That's six, one, I think. Am I correct? Six to one, approve. B?
B is a resolution approving the mutual cooperation agreement with the City of Janesville, the City of Edgerton, the City of Evansville, the City of Milton, the Village of Clinton, the Village of Footville, the Village of Orfordville, and the County of Rock, including political subdivisions therein to form a federal home program consortium.
Ms. Christiansen.
So we started the home, Rock County Home Consortium back in 2002. So as of the end of 16, we'll be going for 15 years. So they were three-year time periods that were extended. At this point, HUD is asking us to recertify as a consortium, partially just because in 15 years, there's been changes to HUD rules. So they want to make sure that the agreement incorporates all those rule changes. And one of the requirements is that, as the title told you, they're requiring us to recertify all the cities and villages. So last time we did this, they, Rock County had an agreement with all those cities and villages, and so it was just Janesville, Beloit, and Rock County. So that's why, that's new, having all those, all the entities in there. So each city and village will be taking up a similar resolution. Since 2002, and you saw Jennifer's letter from Janesville and the packet, and they talked about how much money, how much money was invested through the home program. Since the consortium was established, 4.6 million in home grant dollars in program income have been used to complete housing rehab projects and provide down payment assistance in Beloit. Thirty-six houses were purchased and rehabbed by the City of Beloit, Community Action, and NHS, and sold to low and moderate income home buyers. And six houses are currently under construction. In addition, 99 households received assistance to allow them to rehab their houses through housing rehab programs. So I think it's brought a lot of money into our community, helped improve our housing stock. So we would like to continue to move forward being a member of the consortium. There are some changes to the agreement from what we did last time. CHODO funds, which is the Community Housing Development Organization funds, you're required by federal law to set aside 15% of those funds for CHODOs off the top. Our last agreement had it, and a CHODO in Beloit. As the years went on, it was harder to find a project in Beloit sometimes. Like right now, Community Action has two houses under, being rehabbed, NHS has three. And to take on a new project is sometimes too much. So if we could spread those dollars out, and we increased the percent from 15 to 16%, just to give us a little wiggle room, because HUD requires you to meet that 15% standard each year. But then as part of that, having it be available countywide, we requested more funds. So we are getting, I think it's 28%, up from 19%, which we were allocated in the past agreement. And then Janesville's share goes down slightly, and so does Rock County's share. The way the CHODO funds will work, just to make sure that Community Action and NHS get considered for projects, and actually the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development, who is a new CHODO in Rock County and doing projects, we're going to do an annual competition with the whole consortium. So we will accept applications. And then we will come together consortium, so Janesville, Beloit, and Rock County. And then our thought is, is that if the CHODO funds go to one, you know, go to one city or another, that maybe we can help fund a project in Beloit each year, even if there's not CHODO funds going to that entity. So if Community Action had a project, we don't fund it with Community Action, or CHODO funds, we could fund it with the city's pot, which then would come before you at budget time. So we would set up a very organized system so that we would start it in like June or July, get something to CDA in September, to council in November for action. So you kind of see what's going on with those funds each year. And it would also allow Community Action, NHS, and the Wisconsin Housing Partnership to submit a project each year if they so desire. And we did, Wisconsin Housing Partnership is new, so we didn't have a lot of discussions with them, but we did meet with Cecilia and her staff at Community Action, and we met with Joy Bosco. And so to get some comfort level with them, that there would still be funds available in Beloit for their projects. Because we do think they're doing wonderful work in this community. And Janesville is the lead agency of the consortium. When we first started, we each kind of divvied up the administrative role, while HUD is now putting, because they are the lead, putting more pressure on them to do more of this administrative work. So we did give a little more funds to Janesville in terms of administrative funds. And essentially, the reason Community Action and NHS aren't a party to the agreement is because federal regulations prohibit those agencies in there. The home consortium agreements are an intergovernmental agreement, and only government entities can be party to that agreement. And then this agreement, if approved by all of the municipalities, would take effect for 2017. So if approved, we would start that kind of, that would show up in your next year's budget right away with this new process for the CHODO. But we think it's worthwhile doing to have, because we did kind of check in to see what would happen if we didn't form a consortium. And then we'd all be on our own to apply for projects through the state. And the sense that everybody had was people who have been applying is that you would get one project max a year. And so it would really limit the funds, and we'd be competing with each other as well with the state funds. So this allows us to continue to work together. And then we've committed to coming together as a consortium once a quarter, just to kind of check in. Because one thing that I forgot to mention in the staff report is that we put some language in there that, like if Rock County wasn't spending their money, and we have projects, that money could be adjusted to come to Beloit, or to Janesville, or whoever has projects, so that we never get behind on spending our money, so that we keep that money in Rock County.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Motion by DeForest, second.
Second.
Seconded by Duncan. Question, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I know we had the issue in the past where the money didn't get spent down. So how often would we be checking in to make sure that people are spending the money like they need to?
Oh, we would meet quarterly.
Okay.
So, because the funds would all be flowing through Janesville. For anybody who spends money, Janesville will be the administrative agent. And so we would come together with Janesville once a quarter. So Rock County staff, Beloit staff, and Janesville staff would come together and kind of look at where we're at.
And can redistribute accordingly.
Yeah, and then we can redistribute accordingly.
Great. And I really like the RFP process that you're going to use. I think that's great. Thank you for that.
And I can actually have to give credit to that, to Jennifer Petrazello in Janesville, because that was her idea. So
Great idea.
They actually came up with that.
Counselor Duncan.
I just want to say I was just very happy by this agreement and just wanting to re, to clarify that you said, Julie, that by entering into this agreement, this would increase funding to Beloit.
Well, it will keep it at a similar level that we are now. It won't decline, I guess is probably a better way to say it.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Ms. Christiansen, C, please.
Is a resolution committing home funds to Community Action for 2017 through 2021 Fresh Starts Project in Beloit.
So you all know that Community Action has been receiving funds for the Fresh Start Program for, okay, I don't know how many Fresh Start Program for, okay, I don't know how many years, I think since oh-seven, uh, maybe before. Um, so they've been doing houses in the Merrill neighborhood, um, they are able to do those houses, um, um, with home funds in the, in the mix, so Fresh Start and home funds, so they're getting ready to apply for, um, it's either a three to five, or three, or a five-year period, um, so we wrote this resolution with the five-year, um, and with the new home agreement, they were a little nervous about there not being home funds available, um, so we said we were in agreement to at least pledge commitment of some dollars each year as part of our annual budget process to the Fresh Start Program. Their intent is to do one house a year. Um, I mean, they currently have two under construction, but they intend to like have one kind of in the hopper each year, um, and this would just commit to, um, not a explicit dollar amount, but at least to some dollars every year, um, for their Fresh Start Program.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Levy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes seven zero. D, resolution.
It's a resolution authorizing the School District of Beloit an extension for outstanding special assessments at twenty-two thirty-one Trevino Court, Beloit, Wisconsin.
Counselor DeForest, did you wanna?
Yeah, it's okay, we already voted on it, so.
I didn't see yours, I'm sorry.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
Attorney Krieger.
Uh, the city was approached by Blackhawk Bank and the School District with regard to the property that's commonly known as twenty-two thirty-one Trevino Court. Uh, currently there is outstanding special assessments for some infrastructure that was installed there. Um, Blackhawk Bank currently owns the property, and the School District is interested in , uh, receiving those properties from the bank as a gift, um, to use in their student build, um, project. Um, the city, um, is agreeable, uh, to allowing the deferred, uh, payment of those special assessments based upon the conditions that are outlined in the resolution before you. The first is that the School District must pay off all outstanding delinquent taxes and charges, which are just over eighteen and a half thousand dollars, and those would be due, um, no later than August thirty-first. Um, the city would then waive the requirement that a building permit has to be obtained, and that would trigger the special assessment payment. Um, in exchange for that, the special assessments minus any payments would be due in full at the time that the property is sold, after a home is constructed by the School District. If for some reason the title does not transfer or the property does not sell by November first of two thousand and nineteen, the entirety of the outstanding special assessments would be placed on the prop, on the tax rolls, excuse me, um, by November fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen with a due date of January thirty-first. So the city would be guaranteed payment of those outstanding special assessments no later than the end of January in two thousand and twenty. Um, the city is excited about this program, being able to partner with the School District and the bank, um, to encourage a student build program, um, to allow the education of that type of, um, activity for those students, is a, is a win-win for everyone, so, um, staff does encourage, um, the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, attorney. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, I, I am thrilled as well, and I would just like to offer my, um, appreciation for our city staff and for the School District staff for working to make this happen, this is a fantastic collaboration to allow our students this opportunity for training in the REACH program, so thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Hendrick, by, um, Duncan, seconded by Hendricks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes seven zero. E.
Item E is a resolution authorizing the sale of a portion of a city-owned property at sixteen oh-one Gate, Gateway Boulevard, uh, to New Leaf Homes LLC.
Ms. Christiansen.
Um, so sixteen oh-one Gateway Boulevard was divided off, um, it's the land that's north of the homes that are, um, right off Gateway and Eagles Ridge, um, we intended to provide just kind of a green space there. Um, New Leaf Homes is currently building houses in the gateway, um, they've started building in, I think, two thousand and twelve, um, they're, it's a slow go, they're try, starting to pick up some steam. Um, they are interested in dividing off a portion of that land, which is, should be on your map here, um, so they want to divide off approximately a two-acre parcel, which would extend, um, Raven Drive, which is a little sub-street, it would extend it with a cul-de-sac, um, and then they would, um, subdivide into lots. Um, they are offering to buy that for twenty thousand dollars, and it's contingent upon receiving approval of, um, a certified map to actually divide that off, um, a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, because it is currently, after we purchased this land and divided it off, we, um, rezoned public lands and institutions, so it'd require, um, a comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendment to single-family and then a rezoning, um, and then the net, they, it's also contingent upon getting their preliminary and final plots, that they would divide their lots off, and then a development agreement, um, which would lay out who is responsible for building what and related to the subdivision. Um, per the city subdivision ordinance, if this is approved, New Leaf Homes would provide all public improvements at its own cost, um, which would include the street sewer, all of that. Um, out in the gateway, um, the average value of houses that are being built out there is around, um, one hundred and seventy thousand, um, the houses that have been constructed by New Leaf, um, the average value is about one seventy-nine eight, um, so that would be a nice addition to the tax base. Um, we are supportive of selling this property and putting it back on the tax rolls and actually seeing some more single-family houses out there, and we're recommending approval, um, of this sale.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Move by Levy, seconded by Slanicker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And our last item.
Is a resolution authorizing the City of Beloit to apply for the two thousand sixteen Community Oriented Policing Services COPS Hiring Grant and increase the Police Department's authorized strength to seventy-six with notice of a successful application.
Turn to manager Luther, did you wanna address it, start with, or should we go to Captain Mullen?
Uh, I'm happy to, thank you.
Okay, Captain Mullen.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. When you said you were happy, I didn't know if you wanted to pass the ball, okay.
I'm always happy.
Okay, manager Luther.
Very good. Um, we're certainly.
Just a second now.
Both of us are certainly able to answer any questions you might have about the application. What we're seeking this evening is the authorization of the council to allow the city to apply for the COPS grant. Um, this would allow us to bring in three new officers, and then the fourth year of the program, we would be required to fund those positions, but for the first three years, those three positions would be fully funded. Uh, the COPS grant program typically has a match that is required, uh, in each of those years, and they have altered the program, um, so that match is now required to be in addition to the existing adopted budget of the Police Department. Um, unfortunately, that really would hinder us because any opportunity to reduce our overtime by having these additional officers, any other shifting of funds, uh, anywhere throughout the department, could not be utilized to act as match. Therefore, we are requesting that there be a waiver, um, that is included in the grant application as an option. Uh, we are recommending that we pursue that option because I believe that we will have more flexibility in year four and have very limited flexibility to provide match or to provide funding for these positions in years one through three. Um, we have a very compelling statement, uh, in your packet and explanation, um, there's very specific, specific targeted, um, police work that is anticipated to be completed with these additional officers, it's very neighborhood-based, and it's based in our highest crime areas. Um, I'll certainly defer to Captain Mullen to, um, provide additional details there. I just want to be clear again that this is, uh, authorizing the approval to apply. Um, if we are so fortunate as to be granted or awarded the grant, we would come back to you to have that award approved.
Thank you, Captain Mullen.
Uh, so the three additional officers will, uh, bring up our strength and create that sustainability that we actually need, um, and this will also help with our community partnership and actually, um, increase the safety and reducing the crime fear and disorder in the City of Beloit, and we look forward to, uh, uh, continuing to hire great police officers that are, um, really showing their work here in the City of Beloit.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by, I'm sorry.
Second.
Prashil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Who had a question? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well.
Still waiting for the number. Go ahead.
Oh, you know I'm aye in this.
Go ahead.
I, I did have a question though, I, uh, just for the public's sake primarily, because I feel like I had, I had an answer earlier, but, um, is there any concern that our request to waive the match is gonna affect our likelihood of receiving this award? I'm very concerned, I really want us to get this award, do we think that's gonna hurt our chances?
I can't say with any degree of certainty how that's going to impact our chances. Um, what I can say is that the city's current financial condition and the requirements of new funding being added to the existing Police Department budget, um, are constraints that I don't think the city's in a position to be able to meet right now. Um, so we do believe that it is in our, our best interest to request the waiver, and I think the rationale provided in the grant application certainly justifies that need.
Great, thank you.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes seven zero.
Mr. President, I have one miscellaneous item before you ask for an adjournment.
Miscellaneous item, go ahead.
It's just a statement, I forgot, under the city manager's report. Um, I just wanted to notify the council and the public that, uh, John McGovern from Milwaukee Public Television is going to be in the City of Beloit with his crew the remainder of this week.
McGivern.
McGivern, oh heavens, I pronounced it incorrectly. This is my trial run before going on camera, um, with Mr. McGivern. Uh, Beloit is going to be featured in one of their future around-the-corner, um, shows, so we're very excited to show off some of, um, our unique and, uh, popular, very positive items about Beloit, so wanted, uh, the residents to know that that's where they're, why they're here filming, and, uh, we expect that will likely be aired later this year.
To announce the next listening session too, for the Police Department.